We are going on. 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 I have one off. That's a good question. She don't get it. You can't. 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 He had a, he had a. He never. Yeah. I have to worry about. I thought he was tired. So we had to call him. But he's. Victoria. That wasn't red in the back. She parked. Victoria. You have one technique. Hold on. I'll look. You have to press it. How are you? All the kids. Okay. Okay. Small, small girl there. Yeah. I know. I know. You know what the mental health at the current train station. Yeah. 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 What do you want to tell me? Hold on. I'll look. You have to press it. You're going to do. You're going to do. You're going to do. Come next. What do we have? How are you? How are you? How are you? All the kids. Okay. Okay. Pretty. Small, small girl there. Yeah. I know. I know. You know what the mental health at the current train station. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, my granddad. Yeah. Maybe. Yeah. What did you make to it? What? 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 Sorry. I'm having. I'm having. I'm having. I'm having. Sorry. I'm having. 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 Sorry. I'm having. 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 Smile. Smile. Thank you. What you doing today? Is this loud? Is this better? Can everyone hear me? Yes. Okay. Do they need to be louder? Ethan, I think you need to do a little louder. Yeah. Just so you guys know, we're going to start in about three minutes. No one is. All right. Is this good? All right. Good. Good evening, everyone. As citizens of Beverly Hills and future voters, we, the students, have organized this forum tonight to increase transparency into the elections of our school board members. Thank you all for coming as we open tonight's forum. This evening has been made possible by Team BHF, the youth branch of the Beverly Hills Education Foundation comprised of seventh to twelfth graders at all five Beverly Hills Unified Schools, as well as Interact, the high school level of international organization Rotary International, which is dedicated to connecting students to their community through service. My name is Stella Rosen. I am a senior at Beverly and the president of the BHU just chapter of Interact and a proud committee head in team BHF. We would like to open this forum with the pledge of allegiance led by Interact Vice President Danielle. Place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniela. My name is Noah Trost. I'm a senior at Beverly as well as president of TPHF. Before we begin, we would like to explain the format of this program. To start, we will allow each candidate two minutes each to introduce themselves. Following introductions, we will begin our student questions. These have been kept confidential. We ask that our candidates keep their responses short and sweet within a live two-minute period as we do have limited time tonight. As this is a forum, the first half of our questions will be open to all candidates while our second half of the questions will be directed towards specific candidates. If time permits, we will entertain audience questions. The speaking order was entirely random. Candidates will have two minutes speaking time as monitored by our timers in the front here. The timers will show a green card on their phones and during your first minute, a yellow card during your second minute, and a red card when your time is up. Candidates will get an additional two minutes for each for concluding statement at the end of the event tonight. Mrs. Marcus, please begin with your introduction.
Thank you for sponsoring this forum to the team BHF and to the Rotary Interact and to KAB for taking the time to place this on the television for people to see later. And I want to say it's a wonderful way to have the students participate and feel that they have a stake in the future. Very important. My name is Rachelle Marcus, sometimes better known as Mrs. Marcus. I have taught for over fifty years in this district and at one time or another I have taught at all of the five schools. I have lived in the district for forty-five years. My children have gone to the schools and graduated from the high school. They are sitting in the front row, my son and my daughter Marty and Joy, they've joined me tonight. I'm asked why I am running for an open seat on the school board. We are at a very critical time in our district and I believe my educational experience, my institutional knowledge, passion, and dedication qualify me to lead and resolve the many issues that we will be facing in the next years. Many of you in the audience have had me as a teacher and know that I love students and that their education is first and foremost to me. It is probably that love which kept me in the classroom for so many years. But now I have decided to change careers and seek a seat on the school board because we need to revitalize and renew our schools. Our schools no longer have the reputation they once had and our enrollment has dropped dramatically. We not, we cannot keep doing the same thing over and over and expect things to change. We need to reconfigure the middle school so that we can prepare a vibrant and dynamic, which will provide a dynamic and better education for our students as they approach the high school. And hopefully this will attract and keep our students in the school district. I want every child to feel engaged and ready for the next grade level and after high school to be ready for the future. The safety and well-being of every student is of utmost importance and we must continue to provide both physical and psychological security for our students. We need to provide counseling and guidance to help our students in their everyday challenges. I know what it takes to be open to new ideas and suggestions in order to provide an excellent education. During this forum, I want to share those ideas with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Now to Mrs. Walker Schuman.
My name is Tristan Walker Schuman. I am a BH USC alum. I went to Beverly Vista, Beverly Hills High School, and then I graduated from Boston University. I am a forty-year resident and third generation Beverly Hills Unified School District alum. I have five kids. Four of them are in the district. One is in private school. Two of the five, uh, two of the four are at the high school here. Two are at Albert Dale. That straddles elementary, middle, and high school. So I have experience and exposure for the curriculum in all of those grade levels. I'm an entrepreneur. I started a business seventeen years ago in manufacturing. That's where my business and finance experience comes from. Been a PTA member for ten years. Last year I got involved in the Future Focused Schools team, which gave me an opportunity to become much more deeply involved in the details of how our district is run, how it's funded, and what the challenges are that we face. After the Future Focused Schools team experience, I co-chaired the bond measure for measure VH to make sure that we could secure funding for building the infrastructure that we need in our school district. I'm a former Beverly Hills Basketball League and AYSO and Beverly Hills Little League coach. I hope to be able to make a difference here. I'm heavily invested in this community. It's been very good to me and I hope to be able to return the favor and build for generations the education that they deserve. My platform has four main areas that I would like to focus on. The first is education, ensuring elevated education and safety. The second is increased accountability. The third is financial stability. And the fourth is collaborative leadership. Education and safety is the reason why we're here. We're a school district. We're here to educate. So we need to make that our first priority. Accountability, if everyone does their job the way that they're hired to do and allowed to do, then I think we'll be able to assess where we're going and improve where we need to and also support where we need it. So I'll get into more when you have questions. I see my little red light, so I'm going to say thank you very much for the time and look forward to getting more deeply into the details.
All right. Now Mr. Winans.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everyone coming and being part of this conversation. Thank you to Team BHF and Rotary Interact. Special thanks to our wonderful moderators, Noah Trost and Stella Rosen, and to my fellow candidates, thank you. A little bit about me. My name is Marvin Winans Jr. I'm the CEO of M2 Entertainment, a music, TV, and film production company. I was born in a little town called Detroit and graduated from high school in Beverly Hills, Michigan. So I also went to high school in Beverly Hills. And now I am here running for school board in Beverly Hills, California. So it was meant to be. Twenty-one years ago, a beautiful woman took my breath away and I thought she would be here by now, but it's still my girl today and this is who she is. She's a little late. But my wonderful wife, Monique Winans, and together we have three amazing children. And honestly, it is because of them that I am sitting here today. My wife and I moved into Beverly Hills because we wanted to provide a great education for our children in a great community. And since we moved here, I was bombarded with how our district is failing. But, you know, something in my heart, you know, just said that didn't ring true. So I got involved. And where others have said we have failure, I have seen potential. As co-president of the PTA at Beverly Hills, I'm sorry, Beverly Vista School, I work with engaged parents, teachers, and administration every single day. And they are, I think, what's giving me the hope to believe what I know is true, that we are great. And though we haven't reached our full potential yet, we are going to. It is not time to give up. I'm running for school board because I believe that I don't want to see adults make decisions that benefit adults at the expense of our children. I'm an optimistic candidate. I've spent my entire life instilling hope through my music and anything that I do. And I, with your vote, hope to have the chance to bring that hope to our school district as a member of the Beverly Hills School Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winans. We will now continue into our students submitted questions. First, as we all know, seniors in this year's graduating class at Beverly Hills High School are currently worried about receiving letters of recommendation from teachers due to the teacher union and board impasse. If elected, what will you do to make sure our educators and staff members are happy and are guaranteeing the students the best possible education? How can you make sure students are not in the same predicament next year? We will begin with Mrs. Walker Schuman, followed by Mr. Winans and Mrs. Marcus.
Is there a timeline on this one?
Yes, it's two minutes.
So I'm not sure that there's anything I can do next year, given that the contract is, as I understand, for several years. But what I'm going to talk about is the uncoupling, I think, that needs to happen in the issue of teacher salary and the emotional component from the financial component. It seems to me the financial component is largely resolved at this point, but the emotional component is really important and that's to address the teacher's feelings of being relevant, respected, and appreciated. And I think that can be accomplished by a lot of listening. I think that can be accomplished by more collaborative work together. I think that that can be accomplished by giving the teachers the support they need in the areas that they're asking for, observing areas where they seem to have challenges and giving them support there too, creating pathways for mentorship for teachers that want to become administrators and teaching them how to do that before they step into that job. And working in an environment and with personalities that are more encouraging of teacher input and also listening to students because you guys are the ones that are experiencing this every day. So I think those are two super relevant areas where we need to do a lot more listening.
Thank you.
I agree with a lot that Tristan said. I really believe in listening. And that was when I met with BHF and they interviewed me, I said the first thing that I would do was listen. I think it's very important to understand what the needs are and what they're looking for. But in a lot of ways, this is simply about contracts. And having, you know, been involved in the music business and had many different types of contracts, whether it's publishing or artists or, you know, management contracts. You work with other people on the other side. You deal with unions in the film industry. And a lot of times when you have long, long-term contracts, if you don't have a good underlying relationship, that's what puts the pressure, I believe, on the contract. And that's when you get to these things like work to rule and situations like that. But if you establish a relationship ongoing, you show interest, you know, throughout the contract, then it breeds an opportunity when, when the contract time is, negotiating time is up, when it's time to negotiate. I believe that the relationship will be strong enough to where situations like we're in right now don't happen. Because obviously the worst thing we can have is this to affect the children. And obviously, as well, the teachers are important. However, if we have a good relationship throughout, you know, and I was joking with them, maybe we need to do bowling nights with the teachers and the board. Because obviously there needs to be a stronger communication in the meantime and not just wait for the things to get difficult. So listening and continuing an ongoing conversation throughout the contract is something that I would like to have.
During the years that I've been teaching, I've always had a very, very good relationship with the faculty, with the administration, and have always been able to work collaboratively with them. The one thing that I noticed that might help and because the contract will already be in place and it's just a matter of maintaining a relationship with the teachers. I think it's very important for members of the school board to be visible to the teachers in the community. And one of the things that I believe that I will do once, if I'm elected, is that I will be very present in the schools, meeting with the teachers, talking to the teachers, and getting their ideas and so on, so that I will keep the relationship with them, so that they will know that I'm also very supportive of them, so that they will understand that it's what we're here for is the students. And we need to keep them in that mind, that we're here for the students. And I think that by being visible to the teachers and listening to them and spending time in the school with them will go a long way to keeping the relationship with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. At this point, it is well-known that Metro will most likely be tunneling under our school. Students have expressed concern regarding their safety as a construction of the purple line would be taking place simultaneously with our own construction, preventing us from moving forward with the reconstruction of the main building at Beverly Hills High School. Additionally, students have been informed that there are methane and carbon gas pockets under our school that could be ruptured as a result of the Metro construction. As a school board member, what do you believe are the best measures to take in order to ensure the safety of our students and staff? Furthermore, how will you ensure that we as students receive objective information that doesn't favor either Metro or our district? We will begin with Mr. Winans, followed by Mrs. Marcus, and then Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Can you repeat that last part, furthermore?
Oh, furthermore, how will you ensure that we as students receive objective information that doesn't favor either Metro or our district?
It doesn't.
Favor, sorry, favor Metro or our district.
So this is one issue that I think is a benefit to me. It's actually a benefit that I am new to this district because I haven't got too involved in the minutia. To me, something that is just pretty clear is that the, that a tunnel shouldn't be dug under a high school and the only high school we have in our district, especially when we're on top of oil and so many other things, as far as the health and the safety for our kids. So it just doesn't make sense to me. I was involved with a documentary and the basis of the documentary, it's a small town, and I'll be really quick. There's a small town in Frederick, Maryland, surrounding, it's called Fort Detrick. In the sixties, they ended a program that was, they were building and creating biochemical warfare at this particular, at this particular fort. At the end of the program, they took all of the chemicals and they buried it underground in barrels. And the barrels over time leaked into our, into the groundwater. And people around in that area were really harmed and they, thirty-two out of thirty-six homes, people had cancer and a lot of different things like that. So when I heard about how Metro had, you know, responded to the question of what they would do if the tunneling machine hit the oil well and they responded, well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. To me, I said, well, that's a bridge you'll never cross. Because to me, I think it's important that we protect our kids and because the fight is not over, contrary to what people say. We still have a great opportunity to get together and get behind the students who are fighting right now and make sure that Metro does not build under our school. There's still time and I think we can get together to make sure that they go back to the route down Santa Monica. So I will continue to fight that as long as we possibly can.
Thank you. Well, Mrs. Marcus.
Well, originally, when they changed the route, I was very, very opposed to the route that they were taking. And then when they decided to go under the high school, of course, that became even worse. I would like to speak a little bit about what the students are doing right now because I really applaud what they're doing and I support them in every which way. And I'm hoping above hope that they are able to do what the lawyers and all the money that they spent were unable to do. And that is to bring it to the attention of the nation that this one little school is going to be affected by all of these issues with methane, with hydrogen sulfide, with the noise, with the shaking and the trembling. I personally would love to make hope that they can bring this out and that that will get them to move the tunnel. That's my greatest hope. Is, I don't know what will happen if they don't. I have no idea. I don't know what the plan could be. But I do know that we have to monitor very carefully with all the instruments that are available to make sure that our students are safe and that they will not be affected by this. Because that's the last thing we need is to have our children subjected to possibilities of things like cancer and other things and asthma. So as far as I'm concerned, we need to monitor, support these kids and get them to, I hope, make inroads into changing that tunnel.
I believe that in terms of Metro, we need to run parallel paths. That means that we need to continue to do our, make our best effort to stop Metro from coming underneath the school to the best of our ability. We need to stay on top of the information, the hearings, what's being requested. And at the same time, we need to start preparing for ways to protect our kids, assuming that it is coming. We don't have the luxury of choosing one path over the other. We need to do both. So while I also, I agree that Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Winans, what the students are doing is incredible. I'm a huge advocate for social action. I'm happy to see that this is something that they're doing. I'm looking forward to the results of the upcoming hearing. At the same time, I think it's critically important to maintain oversight over what's happening in the staging area, making sure we're checking the air quality, making sure that we're checking for vibrations, and really preparing for what's going to change. I think if we could convince Metro to use level four equipment so that emissions are not an issue, that obviously would be a huge boon for the safety of our staff and students. But if they're not willing to change, we also need to look at what other alternative paths are. And if that means moving the. So while I also, I agree that Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Wannens, what the students are doing is incredible, I'm a huge advocate for social action. I'm happy to see that this is something that they're doing. I'm looking forward to the results of the upcoming hearing. At the same time, I think it's critically important to maintain oversight over what's happening in the staging area, making sure we're checking the air quality, making sure that we're checking for vibrations, and really preparing for what's going to change. I think if we could convince Metro to use Level Four equipment so that emissions are not an issue, that obviously would be a huge boon for the safety of our staff and students. But if they're not willing to change, we also need to look at what other alternative paths are. And if that means moving the trailers, which we know is going to take eighteen months to do, then we need to start that yesterday, that process. We also need to start examining what would happen if we needed to move students off campus to another location. So I think the plan is, is going to need to be parallel paths, addressing all of those issues all at the same time, to make sure that everyone in the community is protected.
So, that was actually going to be our next question, just on the student walkout. Thank you for all of your answers. Now that you've all discussed your ideas for ensuring student safety during the construction of Metro, we would like to hear, so yes, we would like to hear your thoughts, Mr. Wannens, you can relate to some of that, that was the question, but it was wonderful that that was brought up. Do you believe that the walkout is a productive way for students to have their voices heard on matters such as Metro? And for this next question, what ideas do you have to make sure that students are represented in these types of missions? And we'll begin with Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Walker Schumann and Mr. Wannens.
I believe, originally, when I heard about the problem and I went with Dr. Bregge, it was my suggestion at that time that if we could somehow get sixty minutes to come in on this and do an exposee on sixty minutes on CBS, I even had a friend who was connected with CBS in the legal department, and I brought that to him, and he said he would try to do something for it. I thought if we could get on television with that and bring that out, we could probably do something. I do think that, I hope that the students will be productive, I'm very hopeful that they will provide, they will be able to achieve something that the legal and the money did not provide. As for the second half of the question, what it was?
What ideas do you have to make sure that students are represented in these types of missions?
Well, at the present time, I think the students are represented by the school board, being on the school board, and keeping you informed through the president of the student body, and keeping you informed. And I think they're doing a good job, because right now, the way they've taken the school and taken the students and made them united has been very, very effective, I believe.
Thank you. And Mrs. Walker Schumann?
As I said, I completely support social activism. I love that the students are getting involved, I think it's incredibly important. You had asked about making sure that there's access to objective information in the previous question, I think that kind of ties a little bit into this one as well. The students clearly have taken on a role of advocacy for themselves. They are seeking out information from the district, from the lawyers, from the news, and they're using that in their own ways to try and decide what their path is, which is tremendous. That means we're actually doing something right here. I would encourage them to continue doing that, to continue asking the questions, continue talking to the experts, continue to seek the information, and just say that we are here not only side by side with you, but also really to back you up. We will provide, the organization, if you need help, we will provide access to information if you need it, we will, as grownups in the room, give you a path, like for this walkout that's coming up, it's being treated as a field trip, so there's going to be busing for kids to leave their schools to come to this event, which I think is huge. And that's what we can do to support the students, but really, it's a matter of the students being able to take up the banner of this issue that they feel very strongly about, and have the ability to advocate for themselves, which is an enormous skill that will be very useful going forward in their adult lives. So I think that's, it's an incredibly important thing, and we should continue to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Wannens.
See, the thing is that the reason that they are walking is because it affects them. They're coming out, the Metro is coming to their schools, digging under their school, putting them in harm's way. So there's a reason that they're walking out. And, you know, it's just interesting to me that, it seems like, you know, I think that, I'll just say this, I believe it's very important that they do that. I think it's incredibly courageous that they do that, that they stand up for themselves, and that they unite, and that they organize, and they do what they're doing. And I believe that they should have the support of every community member while they're doing it, and I believe that the city should support them. And I know I will support them, I've already been, I've had some backlash, I put myself in harm's way, I was able to, I had a meeting at the White House with community members from across the country, and in that meeting, I took a risk when the President of the United States was getting up, I took a letter, and at risk of potentially getting tackled by Secret Service, I went over and I handed a letter about the situation at Beverly Hills to the President, to his assistant. And it's something that I believe that we should all be fighting for, because the government can be cavalier and they continue to move on. If Metro cared so much, they would not have placed a staging area next to where the kids are going to be learning. If they cared, they would have put it, you know, hundreds of feet away, because they want to make sure the kids can learn. They're doing their job, and they're making money, they're doing what they have to do. They're not caring about the kids, so the kids have a right to fight for themselves. And I believe we should fight and support them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wannens. Lately, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the benefits and flaws of A through G requirements as the only path to graduation. While under this system, our students are guaranteed to fulfill the requirements needed for a California State University. Students who have a desire to specialize in certain areas or have learning disabilities feel limited by the coursework. Do you agree with the A through G system, or would you consider other pathways to graduation? If so, what other pathways would you consider? We will start with Mr. Wannens, then Mrs. Marcus, then Mrs. Walker Schumann.
Man, I was really passionate on that last answer, I kind of missed the front of your question, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Can you please?
Lately, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the benefits and flaws of A through G requirements as the only path to graduation. While under this system, our students are guaranteed to fulfill the requirements needed for a California State University. Students who have a desire to specialize in certain areas or have learning disabilities feel limited by the coursework. Do you agree with A through G, the A through G system, or would you consider other pathways to graduation? If so, what other pathways would you consider?
I have, I'm just going to be honest, I'm not going to make up anything, I am not prepared to answer that question, I don't have the information to answer that question.
Should we start then?
You can go to someone else.
Mrs. Marcus, Mrs. Schumann, and then we'll come back to Mr. Wannens.
I'll just glean from them.
For me? Yes. The A to G, there's a chance in the school that when a student comes out of the high school, they're not going to go on to college. And we need to provide them with the skills and the ability to face the future when they come out of school. I remember when my son was going to school and approaching, and I'd been told that my son would, had to take this particular course in geometry or something, I don't remember the math class, and I turned to the counselor and I said, do you think he's going to go to Yale or whatever, and the UCC, you know, and I said, take a look at his scores, look at his, what he's doing. And he agreed with me. I think we have to be flexible in the scheduling of our students. Not every student is going to be eligible to go to a four-year college. But at the same time, we need to provide the education for those who want to go to finish the A through G, to be ready with it. I particularly think that we need to address the students with the special needs, so that they will get the education they need for the future, if they don't intend to go, or to go on to college. So we should have something for them, but we should still provide the A through the G college requirements.
I absolutely believe that we need to offer different pathways. I think A through G is great for some students that actually have that four-year college experience in mind, but there are a lot of other pathways, vocational and trade school, there are a lot of other areas that students get passionate about, and they ought to have a path to get there. And they ought to be able to leave high school with a skill set that's not just, that doesn't just dictate going on to a four-year university. So I absolutely would support additional pathways. I think CTE is a tremendous asset at this school, and we could do, we do a great job with it, I think we could do a lot more. And I'd like to see more attention being given there, more funding given there. And really, the students given an environment to experiment and take classes that reflect their passions and interests. You know, I've heard it said that if you love what you do, you don't actually work a day in your life. I've found that to be true in large parts, in the things I choose to be involved in like this. And I think that students need to feel that they have the support and ability to explore more of those things as they leave the massive high school and move on in their adult lives.
Thank you. So Mr. Wannens, do you feel more prepared to answer the question?
Well, I'll say this, and I'm still, I don't have a suggestion, it sounds like, you know, my fellow candidates have suggestions, but because I'm the type of person that would prefer to be prepared to answer something, I don't want to just say something because I don't have the answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Last October through December, a group of twenty-two members of our community joined to form the Future Focus Schools Team in order to come to an informed conclusion regarding reconfiguration in our school district. It is no secret that there are competing views on the financial stability, and we are in need of a solution of some sort. We understand that there are varying opinions on reconfiguration, and we would like you to explain your stance on the issue, and how you would achieve your goals on the matter if elected to the school board. We will begin with Mrs. Marcus, followed by Mrs. Walker Schumann and then Mr. Wannens.
It has been known since the day that the Future Focus signed a school team, finished their deliberations and their work, and came out with their recommendation that we needed to reconfigure the schools of the middle school, because of the fact that there was a lot of money being spent in the middle school that was over, we were overstaffed in the faculty. And I need to tell you that in the last year, while I was teaching as a substitute at Hawthorne, although it was also known that it was the same in the other schools, I had classes with less than ten students in it, math, science, and English. This is not a good use of our faculty and of our resources and of our teachers. I have been in favor of a reconfiguration, because I feel it will provide the students with a more vibrant, dynamic education. They will get more enrichment classes, they will be more electives, they will be able to have a unified system, where teachers will be able to collaborate within the school, instead of having math in the four different schools, now the teachers can work together. They will have, the example, you could have French I in seventh grade and maybe French II in eighth grade, you wouldn't have French, students taking French I and II at the same time for two years. Sometimes you have kids in French in second year with the first year kids. You could also do that with Spanish, you could do that with a lot of the other classes. So the reconfiguration will provide a more dynamic, more vibrant education for the students, and get them ready for the high school. And it would be better for them all around.
Thank you.
So this is one of my favorite things to talk about. I was on the Future Focus Schools Team, it was one of the best experiences in my professional life. It was an incredible group of people, and I think we did really comprehensive work. My view, and I support where we really landed in Future Focus, in our proposal for the final, you know, configuration would be a dedicated middle school, I still stand by that. I think we missed an opportunity at the end of Future Focus, when we made our recommendation, we had asked the board to continue to study and plan for what that would look like. And it would have been great to have a group of people working toward that end. My personal view is that we ought to spend the next several years examining how to, not just examining, but creating a path to implement a dedicated middle school. We've talked extensively about the reasons why that would be a benefit to the community, to particularly the middle grade students, which we know absolutely that we underserved currently. I would give a more robust selection of electives for them to choose from, not just at one school, but for all of the students. Right now, we have ceramics that's offered at Beverly Vista, that's not offered to the rest of the students. We have a wonderful musical theater department in El Rodeo, the rest of the students in the other schools don't get to take advantage of that. So having all of the middle grade students together and those electives available to all of them dynamically changes, you know, their pathways into high school. And it also, not only the electives, but it impacts the academics. If you separate kids, instead of just regular and honors classes for math or English, you can separate them into three or four different sections, then the teachers can more appropriately meet the children where they are, help give them the support that they need, and challenge the students that are, that are, you know, high achieving. And middle school gives us all of those different options. So I'm a big supporter of that, I believe that we ought to spend the next several years creating the plan and building that school. In my opinion, the best location for that would be El Rodeo. During that timeframe, I also think it would be great to seek another bond measure to take care of Hawthorne, because we know that we need to do that. So like a Rubik's Cube, putting this all together, several years' path to implementing a dedicated middle school, taking Hawthorne offline for renovation, and then having two to three K fives would be my suggestion.
I do have an answer, let me. I got involved, this is probably why I'm here today, because of the FFST, the Future Focus Schools Team, I was also on the committee with Tristan. And I, you know, we were asked to recommend something to the board, and I took that word, recommend, really strongly. And I like to use an analogy, if I can, if you were to ask me, Marvin, you know, do you recommend that I build a house? And I said, well, all right, well, where do you want to build a house? And you said, I don't know. And I said, well, how much is the house going to cost? And you said, well, I don't know yet. And I said, well, do you have blueprints? And you said, no, I don't have those yet. And do you recommend that I build it? I would say, well, though the house is a nice idea, and though I hear the wonderful things that can happen, I clearly thought, you know, I can't recommend that you build that house, because you don't have the information, you don't have the plan. And that's similarly to how I felt about reconfiguration, I feel that, you know, we went through a list of the pros and the cons of the different models and education models that we have, and there were a lot of pros that we would get excited about in the room. But because we never had a master schedule that actually dictated, you know, how many of those electives we would actually have, and how that would affect the cost and the cost savings, it to me was not prudent to move forward with recommending that to the board. However, though I was the one dissenting vote on the committee, I do believe that all of the parents that I've spoken to, you know, care about their children. And if you had two options, you had option A, which meant you, you know, your kids were going to go to great schools, they're going to have wonderful careers, and have a wonderful life and beyond, and then option B, they were just going to be mediocre, you know, and get through life. And option A was a middle school, I don't think I know a parent that would not choose option A. So I'm from Michigan, and I grew up, the only thing I ever knew was a middle school. So I didn't have a dog in the fight either way. I moved here for our kids' education, like I said, and I wanted to make sure that they had that. So I was open, but I just determined that we did not have enough information to make the decision at the time. So we'll continue to study it, but I think it's more important that we fix the middle level grades right now. I think that should be the focus as, while we study reconfiguration, we should make sure that the kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades right now are getting the best education they can possibly get.
Thank you, Mr. Wannens. We will now begin our questions directed at specific candidates. Mrs. Walker Schumann, we would like to start with you. From what we understand, you have four kids currently in the school district, and you yourself graduated from Beverly Vista and Beverly Hills High School. How do you think your perspective as a parent will age you in your position as a school board member? What have you seen occur in our district as a parent that has encouraged you to pursue a spot on the school board?
We do so many things well here, and we know that, because we had an audit last year that told us there are a lot of things we do really well here. But there are a lot of areas where we need to give a little bit of support, and we need to work on. The experiences that I've had largely in Beverly Hills as a parent are pretty stellar. There are some areas that I also think that we need to do some work on. As a parent, I've experienced with all of my children bullying in the schools with other kids. There have been situations, sometimes with teachers, that are very intimidating to the kids. There are programs that appear one year and then disappear the next. You know, these are all real challenges that change from year to year. And so I hope as a board member to bring more stability and consistency to the programs that we're able to offer, a pathway for training and support for teachers and for the programs that we bring in that work, how to make them permanent, and really to change the conversation. I think now is a critical time when we need to decide who we are and who we want to be, and really create a path and strategy to get there. And that begins with how we treat each other, not just the students, but the parents, and also the teachers and the administrators, and each of those different categories between each other. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see some changes in those areas.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schumann. We will now direct our next question to Mr. Wannens. Having moved from Beverly Hills, Michigan, to Beverly Hills, California, do you think you bring a new perspective that would be beneficial to? you bring a new perspective that will be beneficial to the Beverly Hills School District? And as a newcomer, what elements do you think are missing that are hindering the full potential of our schools? And how would you implement your ideas?
So I, I, I actually do. I was, um, toward the end of our committee, you know, with FFST, I began to see how I think it was beneficial that I had an outside perspective. I, I didn't have the frustration that I think, you know, and I empathize with, you know, the other members of the committee because I guess, you know, the conversation had been going on for so long and they wanted to make and get something done, and I respect that. However, in my opinion, I, I mean, I still had the freshness to, I believe, look at where we were on the merits and make a decision based on what was actually there. So there are definitely, I think, uh, there's definitely a value to having grown up in, in another area and having different experiences. So I look to bring a lot of that to, to the board, and that was just an example. The second question, I'm sorry.
Uh, what, uh, how would you implement the ideas of the elements that you think are missing?
Um, well, okay, right. So I definitely think just being prudent and I enjoy, you know, like I, like I mentioned earlier, you can't say enough for listening and understanding what others are saying. And then just being, you know, steady. And I believe that one thing will, you know, I believe in finishing what you get, what you start, you know, that's something that I, I see, you know, I've been going out and speaking to people in the community. There's a lot of frustration towards, uh, towards the board and in the district because there are projects and, and, you know, construction that has not been finished. And I think that, you know, when you give your word, you should also, you should follow through on that word. And I would love to make sure that whatever we begin, that we finish. And I, I think that some of those characteristics and the values that I bring will help to make sure that the things that we do get done and that the kids don't, you know, aren't hurt by our lack of follow-through.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Wyden. We will now direct our final first specific question to Mrs. Marcus. You've dedicated over fifty years of service to this school district as a teacher and parent. You've mentioned throughout your campaign, the gold standard that our district was once referred to as, and your hopes to make that a reality once again. What is your plan to achieve that gold standard? And what kind of insights or history as a teacher give you?
I'm sorry, gold standard?
Uh, yes. You, you mentioned throughout your campaign, the gold standard that our district was once referred to as, and your hopes to make that a reality again. What is your plan to achieve the gold standard? And what kind of insights does your history as a teacher give you?
As, uh, when I came to the district, the, the district was known as the lighthouse of the district, and that's probably the goal that you're referring to. At that time, when I came to the district, there was a tremendous amount of time that was, the students would go on to college and they all go on to four-year colleges. And of course, that has changed in the last fifteen to twenty years where many of our students do not go on to college or opt for the junior college instead of going on. And that has, I don't think, I still think that we offer a very good education at the high school. And I would hope that we would continue to offer the classes that the students need. I would like to look at the curriculum from the bottom all the way to the top or from the top to the bottom to see that we are providing the students with the classes, that we are using curriculum that has been known to be effective. I would like to see more of our students ready to be able to go to four-year colleges, whether they choose not to go to four-year colleges for other reasons. Our district is some, part of the reason that our district has gone down in the eyes of the state and so on is because of the number of students that do not go on to four-year colleges, but don't even take the SAT exams. I would love to see our students do better in the, taking the SAT exams. And I would love to see that, that would enchant, and that they would be ready for them and that they would do well. And they need the education. So we need to look at the curriculums, look at the classes that are being offered, and to make sure that the students are being prepared with the proper classes and with the proper instruction and the time in the classroom. We have a great group of teachers here. They are excellent. We have approximately fifty-five percent of our students who are taking the, I guess my time is up. Fifty-five percent just finished taking honors classes and AP classes. And eighty-five percent of them get scores of three, four, and five on them. I would like to see that fifty-five percent go up. I think we are a good school district, we just need to continue to raise it a little bit.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. With some of the, we have a lot more. We would now like to open the platform out to the audience before we get to some of our other students' submitted questions. Do we have any audience questions? They can be asked of a specific candidate or of all of the candidates.
Back in the day, the Beverly Hills Institute School, the school board hired good administrators and let them do their jobs as far as the teachers and the individual schools. It seems like the last several years, the board has been far more involved in the minutia of teachers and administration. And I'd like to know where each of you fall on that spectrum of hands-off policy towards the individual, teaching, something on, and, and being far more.
Did I answer that question? I am a person who believes that we give the superintendent, the board gives the superintendency the policy that they should follow in terms of what's going to happen in the teaching and in the curriculums and so on. It is not my job to, to micromanage the district. I do not intend to do that. I would like to see the superintendent instruct, the educational assistant superintendent to look at the math curriculum and see what we can do to change and get our students so that they don't count out on their fingers on sixth grade and that they know their math facts and that they can begin to think when they're given word problems. Unfortunately, that has to be done. And right now, we need to empower the superintendent, tell him that this has to change. I can't change it. My co-candidates can't change it. I do not intend in any way to micromanage this district. But I do want you to know that I will be in the community. I want to visit the schools. I want the teachers to know that I'm supporting them and so on, but not to solve the problems. The problems have, we just set the policy. The school board sets policy. The superintendent then instructs his, his assistants, they go to the principals, the principals take it to the teachers. That's the way it has to work.
Did you want other answers?
Yes, we're opening up to other candidates.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I agree with, with some of what she said, that I, I do, I think we should, as a board, set vision and we have fiduciary responsibility and it would be great to delegate and make sure that superintendent is, you know, there to do his job, you know, and, and should be allowed to do so. I, I believe that there does need to be a higher level of accountability within the district. And so, you know, and I ask this question because we've had a lot of superintendents here over the last few years and you want to make sure that someone has the opportunity to get, you know, kind of get into the fabric of the, of the job and, and be able to do the job that he's been asked to do. And yet, because we have so many issues surrounding the district, it's kind of like a lot of pressure there to get things done. So I, I do believe, though, that in, in giving our superintendent the power to do what he has to do, but that means that we have, as a board, have to work together so that we're not always fighting so he doesn't have, he's not confused on what he's supposed to be doing. So I believe if we can come together as a board and, and, you know, it's not, we don't all have to believe and agree on every single thing, but at least have a working relationship where we're not fighting and we have a good relationship, I believe, with the community and we can just get this back to just level ground, it will give the space for the superintendent to do his job, you know? So that's, that's how I feel.
I think there are two really key operative words in, in changing the tide on how we're doing things and how we need to be doing things. And those two words are empowerment and accountability. I've managed people for many years and I've always found that you get far more benefit out of people that are feeling appreciated and encouraged and are given a platform from which to jump, to take on more responsibility, to really show how stellar they can be. But if you don't give them the opportunity to do that, you're never gonna know what they're capable of. And on the other side of that coin, if you don't give them the opportunity to do their job, you're not ever gonna know where they need support or where they have challenges. So I think the, the most important part of, I know, the first step of having incoming board is going to be empowering the superintendent and the administrators, the principals, the assistant principals, and the teachers to own their positions, to own their duties, and to do them to the best of their ability. They need to be encouraged to be innovative, to bring in programs that are new, to bring in ideas that we haven't yet implemented into our curriculum, and really evaluate that and, and take a look at what we can do differently. And then the accountability piece is really, you know, going back after giving them this opportunity to be empowered in the jobs that they're doing, to go back and, and check in and say, how is this going? Have you been able to run with it? Do you have any new ideas? Have you done anything differently? Is your outcome any different? And that's really gotta be the strategy and path. And it has to come from the top. We have to give people the opportunity to prove themselves. We need to support them when we know they need it. We need to give them more opportunity when they prove they deserve it. And, and that's really, in my view, what the role of the board is, to empower and, and to expect accountability in return.
Are there any more audience questions? Um, sorry, I'll say it first.
Mrs. Marcus has taught my children and she's got fifty years of experience.
I can't hear you.
Fifty years, but Mrs. Marcus has run into fifty years of experience in our school. Are you sure that the other two candidates compare their practical knowledge to hers?
How the other two candidates?
Have you compared your practical knowledge, your ability to self-improvement in school to hers?
Well, I definitely can't compare my ability to teach in a classroom to hers at all, because I've never been a teacher in a classroom. And so I respect the years that she's put in and I believe that it's a wealth of knowledge, you know, that she has in relation to teaching. I don't believe, though, that, I mean, if I understand your question right, it sounds as if the question is more so about whether or not people who aren't teachers should be on a school board. And I honestly believe that people who are elected don't have to be teachers to the school board. And basically, there's a lot of, there's a lot more responsibility than honestly teaching. We're actually, based on his question, not supposed to micromanage. The superintendent is there to actually be the teacher, I mean, the, the, the boss, and then he's supposed to implement, you know, with the teachers and the staff beneath him. So we have fiduciary responsibility. There are a lot of things, as you can see, there's, you know, there's been oil wells and, you know, lawsuits and construction and there's a lot of things that, you know, really a teacher doesn't necessarily, and I'm sure you probably have certain qualifications, but just because you're a teacher doesn't qualify you to handle or to understand. You have to have the ability to communicate with parents and have to, you know, a listening ear and, and to win their trust. And so there's a lot of other character things that a person in this position, being a representative of an organism, of a body of government that represents a community has to have, other than necessarily one, one area. So that, that to me would be an answer to that question.
So collectively, if you add up all of the ages of my children, I have seventy-two years of experience. I was gonna say, as some relatives, the last thing that I taught in a classroom would be a paper airplane making class in my kids' preschool, so I can't claim to be a teacher. But I can claim to have lots of experience and exposure, particularly in this district, in this community, in this city, at the, at the schools. And I can see with my own children where they feel supported, where they excel, where there are challenges. I think that is incredibly relevant to a body like the Board of Education. In addition, I've been in business for seventeen years and it's an entrepreneur, a business that I started. I've worn every hat in the business. I've, I've created and fostered relationships for years and businesses like this are built on relationships. I think that's super relevant to any board position. You have to be able to develop relationships with people, you have to be able to maintain them in a proper way. And the other part is you really need to be able to learn on the fly. You need to be invested in the material, you have to metabolize it and digest it quickly. You have to ask really intelligent questions when you get this information in order to properly evaluate and make decisions. So I think those are some really relevant experiential points that I offer.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. The question was directed to you, would you like to?
Was it directed to me?
Well, it was.
All right, I, I understand. I'm very, very fortunate. In addition to having the fifty years of, of, or close to fifty years, I've had the chance to teach many different subjects so that I became very familiar with many other subjects. Also, the ability to work with many different administrators, to work with setting up schedules, to plan lessons, to get involved in school, community projects, and to work with the public and to work with parents. And I feel that this ability to work outside of the school has also been very beneficial to me. I've never run a business per se, but I can read a budget and I can work on working collaborative with other people. I think that one of my strengths, not so much as a teacher and having been in the classroom, but my ability to work with other people, to get them to come with ideas, to work out the ideas, and to be able to solve problems by working collaboratively with the other people around you. So yes, I know that I, my education experience itself is gonna help me with the scholastic or the academics, but I also have the ability to be with other people and work with other people and get things done.
Thank you for the questions so far and all the responses. Yes.
This is for anyone who wants to answer. Hi, my name is Kate Lee and I'm a senior here and also a team HHS secretary and ASB historian. I'm very involved in the school and have noticed a large decrease in unity and morale throughout the student body, primarily due to construction and the ways we constantly have to work around it. If the metro ends up digging up a new school, then the bungalows are going to have to move from where they currently are. And we don't know where they're going to move yet. Where do you suggest we move the bungalows and how do you think we can increase the morale that we have been lacking since construction started?
I'll, I'll take that one first. There are only, as far as I know, two locations that would even be viable for the trailers to be moved to. One of them is the parking office a little further to the south. The other one would be the front lawn, but that obviously would, would impact the construction, you know, staging area of our own and require some work. But like I said, that moving those trailers is an eighteen-month process, so, you know, something definitely that we need to look at and plan for. Tell me the, the beginning part of your question again.
Morale.
Oh, morale, yes, okay. I was a cheerleader here for a number of years and I can tell you it is heartbreaking to go to these games and to see what's going on. I, as much as we're not that competitive in football, I love that these guys are out there trying every week. I love that we're giving it a good effort. I, I love the cheerleaders, I love the band. The band is amazing. This, there's so much in those moments at these football games, but it comes and it goes and then in the school day, it's not really there. It was so present when I was a student here. I would love to explore different ways of doing more team building, bringing back more morale, but until we really start making strides, changing the paradigm of what we know and what our normal is here, we're not gonna see that. Everyone needs to have the perspective that we are unified as a school district. We are not just a high school and a bunch of K8s. We are unified. And until we start building that messaging and making people believe that and convincing our community that we are all invested in improving this and finding our path and strategy, none of that is gonna change. And it's gonna take everybody, not just the students on the high school. It is gonna take every single community member in this town. So that's my answer.
One of the things that I encourage students when they leave the elementary school and they're going to graduate from elementary school is I always hope that when they get to the high school, that they find some group that they can become involved with and that they can connect with that group, like being a part of K-Bed or being a part of a sports team or being a part of a chess club. And, and having that connection which makes them feel like they have something that brings them to the high school, that makes them love going to school every day. And I think that would help raise the morale if all the students could be encouraged to somehow become involved. That also means that we also have to get notice of those groups and make them able to show what they do and have certain ways that they can illustrate what they do and why they're important and why they, so that they feel good about themselves. So I think that the more we can offer the kids at the high school, that in the way of becoming involved, I think we'll do a great deal to making the kids feel like they are a part of a community. And I think that that's very important. And as I said, being able to show and illustrate what they do at some kind of, like the football kids or the cheerleaders or something like that, showing how they do. kids or the cheerleaders or something like that, showing how they do things, I think creates more morale for the students.
I would say, you know, first I would say, you know, don't be discouraged, because some of the, you know, the best relationships are forged under pressure, you know what I mean? And you guys are going through a lot right now, you're dealing with a lot. But I believe that, you know, in the end, all of the stuff that the kids that are there have been dealing with is, could be an opportunity to build a lot of community, and you should take that opportunity. And you're coming together for things like you're fighting Metro and you're speaking up. I've been at many board meetings where the kids have come and spoken their minds. So, you know, you have an opportunity to build and forge stronger relationships under this pressure. I also would say, you know, working with the PTA, I think there's an opportunity for community and parents, you know, we send our kids to the schools. I think if we get involved a little bit more ourselves, we can provide opportunities for the kids to have more to do, you know, and I think that that would, you know, help in, you know, while we're going through this time, and not just, you know, shunning you guys and saying, well, you gotta deal with it, but finding and listening and talking to you and figuring out what is it that we can do to actually get more, get you out of that, you know, situation. But, you know, don't look at it and run from it. I think you guys have an opportunity to forge great and stronger relationships, and I would just try to encourage you not to be discouraged through this time.
Thank you. Over there.
My son graduated last May, and he's on the autism spectrum, and he had some learning disabilities. He's got a lot of support here in the district, so I'm very happy with that. But I have friends and family in the community, people that I know, whose kids aren't getting the kind of services from our school district that we were able to get, their needs aren't being met, and they're having to go to schools like Fusion, and that costs the district money. Do you, and this is for each of you to answer, feel like it's important that you try to shore up what we offer children with specialties within our school district, or do you think that it's better that we pay to let them go to other schools?
Well, um, from my understanding, it, I, first of all, I've heard a lot of parents telling me, you know, that there is some insufficiencies when it comes to the special education programs here at the school. And I believe that we definitely need to make sure that we are, one, listen to them, and I'm gonna keep saying that, but I think we have to hear them so we can see what the needs are that they have. And, but, I, as well, I know that there, I could be wrong with this number, but maybe only five or six kids that have, you know, had to go to a different, to the Fusion currently right now, that I, from my understanding, I could be wrong. But I do think, though, that we can broaden and make it more robust for the kids and actually give them better plans and make sure that we're focusing on their needs more. Because I consistently hear that problem, so obviously we need to do more for the kids.
I believe that we need to provide as many of the services as we can here, and if we can't, then of course we have to look for other means. But we should try with everything we've got to provide the kids with the special needs to be educated at our school, to, first of all, to keep them at home and keep them near us, and so we can have better collaboration with the, and discussions with the people that they're working with. So I personally would love to see us be as much as possible to educate our students right here at this school, rather than have to send them to other schools where it would be very, very expensive. So that's my personal way, and we need to examine to see if we can provide all the services that are needed for that reason.
Yeah, I agree with, I would agree with that. I think we need to really take a look at what we're spending on the families whose education, educational needs are not being met here, that are, you know, that tuition is being paid at other schools and locations. I think we need to examine what more we could do if we retain those funds and offer those services here. Part of that conversation, I think, is a dedicated middle school as well. I think we could better serve those middle-grade students by having them all in one location instead of spreading them out across four different locations. And that, and actually improving that in those grade levels in sixth, seventh, and eighth gets them better prepared to move on to the high school. And it also more clearly defines what their needs are, how they can be supported, so that the support and the intervention is offered all the way through the high school. So it's definitely something that we need to look at. It's sad that we aren't able to cover the needs of all of the students in our community here. Definitely something we should aspire.
Going back to a question that was asked before about Metro and digging under the high school, I think I know what Tristan's answer is to this, I think I heard her answer, but for the other two candidates, assuming that the Metro is allowed to dig under the high school, please tell us your specific plan for making sure that the health of our children is not at risk. What would you do? Where, would you move the bungalows? Would you move the students into another school and make that a high school for a couple of years so that, I mean, this is something that I think most parents are really, really concerned about, who have kids at the high school or who are gonna have kids at the high school.
I remember sitting at a board meeting a few months ago, approximately a few months ago, and hearing the fact that they could move the bungalows, and that was brought up then, and I thought, well, that seemed like a reasonable thing to do. And then I heard nothing more about it, and that bothered me, because I felt that they should have moved the bungalows. I thought they should have somehow been able to get a concession from the MTA and stop, and a mitigation of some sort, and that they would have been able to, to stop fighting with all of this. We could have moved the bungalows and maybe they would have footed the bill for it. So I really felt that we missed the boat on that. That was my personal opinion at that time. I expressed it, but nothing ever came of it. So I personally wanted to see the portable classrooms moved. If worse comes to shove and it comes to the point where our students are not safe, we may just have to do the most horrible thing in the history of Beverly Hills. I will not let a student be subjected to any percentage of cancer at all. And I would, I have, that's just what I can say right now.
So, in my opinion, obviously, as I said, I wanna fight. And because honestly, this is our only high school, we don't have a lot of space in Beverly Hills. I mean, this is, that's why we have to fight. We don't have anywhere else to really put them. I mean, I've heard a conversation about maybe at Roxbury Park or something, and trying to go over there, you know, seems like the options are very, very limited to the possibilities if, if there were a problem. If something were to happen to the school, like, you know, God forbid, right now, you know what I mean? I'm not sure that there is, you know, a great plan immediately at this time. So I do think, though, that we should be, you know, working towards that to make sure, just in case, but right now, because we just don't have a lot of land to work with in this town, we have to do what we can to fight it as much as possible. So, I mean, that's, I think that's why the passion is there, because it's our only high school, and they're just not giving us, you know, they don't seem to care.
I'm actually gonna say one more thing, because I'm not sure that I was really throwing all of my thoughts on what those possibilities are. A couple of years ago, when we had this issue with the couple that had moved at El Grande O, and we had to vacate the campus for three days while they figured out what to do, there were conversations that I had had with Ms. Ellen even back then, and there are contingency plans for every school, if there is some emergency that happens, to push those students into other schools so that their education could continue. We were required by the state to have these emergency contingency plans. So one of the things, and this really is just kind of formulated in the last couple of weeks in my mind, for Metro, as that conversation has started and parents have started to ask, what happens if we have to close the high school? My suggestion would be, and it's obviously not optimal, and there are concessions that would have to be made in terms of the class size ratio, but one way that that could be handled is to put the ten through twelve kids on one campus, the seven through nine kids on another campus, and then have two K-6s. And I believe that that really is the only path to make sure that every kid in the district still has a classroom, still has a teacher, still has curriculum. Obviously, it's not optimal, but I think at least that's a pathway in a worst-case scenario.
Are there any other students or audience questions?
Let's talk a little bit about some real estate. You have a very valuable piece of property directly across from the high school. It has great income potential. What plans would you submit to the board if you became a member?
You're talking about the administrative building across your high school?
Yes. Don't all talk about it.
That's a great question. It's a great question. I'm not sure that I've given that a lot of thought at this time. I think that we need to look into that and start to make discussions about that, but I'm not sure what exactly we can do with that piece of property at this time. So I haven't thought about that, and I would not want to make a comment on it until we've been able to really study it and learn what we could possibly do with it. But the thought that that's there is very, very promising.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I obviously, I feel that way too. I mean, I've been over there, it's sitting there, it doesn't seem to be at its optimal use. There's been conversation about seven through twelve, you know, and the reconfiguration conversation during the seven through twelve, and trying to figure out a way to use that land as a part of a seven through twelve model, and having, you know, maybe, you know, separating, you know, the kids, you know, where the younger kids are in that area, but that's, that will take a lot more money and, you know, and finishing the actual building and outfitting and all of that. But I definitely see the potential of what it could become, and as far as, you know, like you said, being lucrative, like something that can, you know, be revenue for the district. So I'm definitely willing to, you know, pursue that as an opportunity for us as a school district.
I, I think that we need to examine any sources of revenue that we can create and generate. That clearly, you know, surplus real estate is one of those that's sitting there untapped, and we need to address that. I would, I would love to see that building repurposed and developed as an income generating property. What that would look like, I don't really know. I'm not sure how it's done, what our limitations are, you know, what the trajectory for planning would be, but it's absolutely something that we should look at. It's an asset that's sitting there untapped and undeveloped, so we should address it.
Do we have any other audience questions?
Yeah, like I said before, I usually come to the board meetings, and I feel that we don't get enough parents involved in the district. And my question is, what would the new board members do to try to get especially the teachers and the parents to communicate more, not via the internet, but more person-to-person, more of a customer service type of thing, where the parents could actually be able to spend time with the teacher and have discussions about the students, what's lacking, or what we're doing? That's something that I feel that has been lacking in this district, and I've been here for a long time, and to me, it seems like this has gotten worse. So I don't know if it's because the teachers don't have enough time to do it, or whatever it is, but I feel that the parents need to have the ability, or have the chance to talk to their teachers. When I go to the open house, all you see is that the parents wanna spend time to talk to these teachers, but because, you know, the way it's structured, I understand, we don't get to talk to them, and the only time you get to talk to them is maybe twice a year. I don't think that's enough. I wanna be able to speak to the teacher more often than that, because I wanna be able to make sure that my child is doing well, not at the end of the year when he's failing, the year's over, but I wanna see more of that throughout the year. That's what everybody on the board is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that two different ways. Number one, I do believe that we ought to offer more in the format of workshops for parents to become involved in the district, to ask questions, to become more aware of what's going on, particularly in light of the fact that we've got so many really big issues right now with construction and MTA and all these other things. So I absolutely believe that more workshops would be super beneficial, even if it's just on top of subjects of screen time, bullying, you know, alternative, innovative, educational strategies. But in terms of teacher contact, I don't know how much of the contract actually deals with that or requires that of teachers, and I am a big believer in training children, teaching children how to advocate for themselves as they get older. So I think part of what's happening here is really, and it is, you know, appropriate for the parents to have less involvement as they, as the kids get older, and for the kids to learn how to advocate for themselves, how to go to the teachers and ask questions, how to ask for help and support. And certainly, as parents, we wanna encourage our kids to do that, and if they're struggling, give them the tools to do that. But I'm not really, I'm not really sure what format that would take to make more time for teachers and parents alone to interact at the upper grade levels. I don't know what format that would take.
I can address a little bit about teacher contact times, being a teacher. First of all, there are times in the schedule of the, during the year, where the teachers have what is called an early dismissal. And the purpose of that early dismissal is for the parents to have time to meet with the teachers. And you can set up appointments with the teachers at that time, and that usually happens once a month, and it rotates from week to week, from month to month, so that you can call and make an appointment with the teacher at that time. I think they get out of school like at something like 1:45. It's an early dismissal, it's called, and the purpose of that is to meet with the teachers. Another time that there is is that early, when you start school late, late Wednesdays, the teachers should be available, although they do some professional development during that time, they also have personal time, and that time is still, you should be able to meet with the teachers at that time. I know that I did on many occasions. As far as students having problems, I often tell the students that they need to call, go to the teacher, or sometimes they can go to the counselor, because now we're going to have counselors on every staff full-time. For the last couple of years, the counselors were at every other school, and if the counselor wasn't there that day, they couldn't get to see the counselor. But now the counselor is going to be on the school grounds every day with the regular hours and being able to meet with students when they feel that they wanna meet with the counselor. So they should know that they can go to the counselor, that's what they're there for. So I think that better understanding of what's available with the parents, in other words, the parents have to learn what's available for them, and then the kids should know what they can do also. And I think that, I think that will help a lot to increase the relationship between the teachers, the parents, and the students.
So I agree with what they were saying. As well, though, I, I'm a part, I'm the co-president of an organization at the school called the PTA, and it's the Parent-Tutor Association, which is, should be an opportunity, and, you know, for the parents and teachers to, you know, to be involved together. So we just have to find a way, I believe, if we can find a way to provide, you know, to, one, get a hundred percent teacher, you know, you know, membership in those organizations, and, but the difficulty has been teachers finding time to be at the meetings. So I think if we can create a way, because there's already, you know, the organization is there for parents and teachers to be associating, and I think if we can just get more buy-in and find the right way, that's something that we were trying to do this year, just get, find a way for the teachers to have the time to be a part of the meetings, and then you can obviously have an opportunity to speak with your teacher a little bit more, but maybe more functions, you know, after school or maybe before school. But I know, I know teachers have a lot of time, you know, they have to spend, but we do have an organization, just figure out a way to get more involvement from the teachers in the PTA. I think that would be another, another way to do it.
Do we have any other audience questions? Yes.
Okay, so there's many issues that face our district, as I think most of us are aware. Stand up, oh my goodness, okay. I'll lean forward. There are many issues that face our district, and assuming that you win a seat on the board, do you truly believe that you can hear and meaningfully consider the opinions of the community, rather than pushing for what you personally may believe about any given issue? The end goal being the betterment of the students? Did you guys get it, or do you need to repeat?
Are you talking about where they get to address the board at the time before the meeting? I'm trying to clarify. When you address, are you talking about the open session, or the?
Not just open session, but if there's other, there are often other avenues for the community to voice what they may feel on any given issue, or maybe they'll reach out to you directly. But I'm just asking, do you, personal capacity, do each of you believe that you can truly consider the opinions of the community, even if you have like a very personal set stance on any given issue? I know it's a broad question, but part of this is how you're going to work together as a board and represent us as residents who elect you. So I think it's important.
You're talking about being open. You're talking about being open-minded is kind of what you're saying.
Fire that, yes.
Okay. Let me, let me just weigh in on that one. Um, I think it's important to consider all of the options at any of the, at any of the issues that we are working on as a board. That's what we did in Future Focus. We examined all of the data, all of the information, the financials, the studies, uh, and we, and we came to, um, majority consensus that way. I think that's a really important process. Um, and that the decisions made by the board need to be driven by evidence, fact, data, information, not just by feelings and, and honestly, not even just by community, you know, popular opinion. I think all of the different options need to be weighed and decided based on the information presented and available for the best path forward for all of the students, uh, and all of the community. And that's really what this role is about, is making sure that every student at every school is accounted for and considered and benefits from the decisions and choices we make.
I also feel that I have always been one who has been open to ideas, listening to the parents and so on. But once again, we now need to think about the, the fact that if the superintendent is, we have to be able to work together with the superintendent and work through with the board to come to consensus. But I do believe that we need to have this open dialogue. I would love it because I think that's how we will get to the bottom of issues, solve the problems, and hear everybody's ideas. And I'm all for that.
So this is, you know, I've sat in meetings and I've sat in the back during some of the most, you know, you know, toughest meetings for a board. And this is not an enviable position and I totally second-guessed myself a few times as far as being up here because it's very difficult to be in a position where, you know, you, you want to please everyone. You want people to be happy. But I will say this, though, it's no way possible that I would be here if it wasn't for listening and being open-minded to people's suggestions and ideas. Um, I, I definitely believe that, you know, you have to hear everyone. You have to be open, even if you think you know what's right. And obviously, it comes down to decision and you, at that point, you have to have integrity. You have to make that decision based on what you believe is right. But you should always be open because I know there's been slight tweaks to things that I believed after I heard one more person say one more thing. And I didn't know that that was, you know, an option. And so, being open, I think, is definitely a part of what this job entails. You have to be willing to listen to people and then they have to feel like you're listening. And I, because I think that builds a relationship that can continue. So we have to have an open ear. We have to have an open mind. And though, we have to make a decision at some point. And, uh, once that decision is made, make sure that, because I do think that even if I made a decision you didn't agree with, you would at least know that I actually were, I listened and that I was open to hearing what it is you were asking and what you were demonstrating and saying to me. And if I made that decision, you would trust that I did it because I care about the kids and I care about the education and the future of the students.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead. We don't have that much time left, so we're going to go ahead and do the closing statements, starting with Mrs. Walker Schuman and Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Wines. Um, but don't leave quite yet because we have a couple announcements after their closing statements. So.
Um, we are an incredible community. We are a group of parents and business people, students and independent thinkers. And it is such an incredible experience from my perspective, from my position, not only to have been fortunate enough to be involved in this district, particularly in the last year to the level that I have, but to see how many parents are also so committed and so involved. And, and not just parents, teachers, administrators, counselors. Um, and I'm very encouraged because I think more people are paying attention and more people are invested now than have been in decades. And I love to see that because that's what we need in order to rebuild this community and this school district. Uh, we've got a lot to work with. We just need to make some stra, smart strategic choices and start building a unified vision together. Um, so I hope that, um, you like what you've heard tonight from all of the candidates. I hope that you will please go out and make sure you're registered, make sure your kids are registered that are old enough to vote, make sure your neighbors are registered and, and their family members. Um, and get out there and really vote your truth. Vote what you wanna see happen in this district. It's really important and we're counting on you as much as you're counting on us.
Ms. Curtis?
Well, once again, I'd like to thank the Team BHF and the Road to Re-Interact Group for sponsoring the forum. And I wanna give everyone, and to give everyone a chance to hear the candidates and learn more about us. And of course, I wanna thank every one of you for being here tonight, taking time out from your busy schedules and to, uh, listen to us and make a decision on what you think. Uh, I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm not running for personal gain. I have nothing to gain from this, but I, I am running to represent the students first, their parents and residents. I care deeply about our schools and I want to use my background in education to revitalize and renew the education of our children. It's not going to be easy, but I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and use my energy to get to work. I hope everybody will, encourage everybody to go to the polls on November 6th and vote. You will have two votes and I hope that, uh, come November 6th that I will find myself a member of the school board. So thank you very much for being here tonight and I hope to see you soon.
My, uh, journey here started with the FFST. And, uh, we were asked to make that recommendation and, and, and honestly, you know, the, it was a nineteen to one vote. And honestly, I believe that, that vote kinda encapsulates who I'll be as a member on the school board. Um, I won't make a decision, you know, that's based on my emotion. I won't, won't rush to judgment without, I believe, having a plan in place. And I won't sacrifice my integrity, you know, for politics. And that's, that's how I came to my conclusion. It was, it, that was me, not saying that anything about the others, but that was, that was me. So, this has been, I've lived a lot in this last year and I, I've, I've learned a lot. And what I really understand now is that this is a great opportunity right now. We can actually become something great. There was a moment when, when I was, like I said, inundated with a lot of things about how negative from the five million dollar deficit to, you know, the declining population. And I had to check within myself to see what type of candidate I would be. And in my core, I said, we can still be great. If I'm gonna run, if I'm gonna be on the board, I have to have an optimistic approach. And I still believe that this district can be great. I believe that we can not only be the lighthouse district, but we can actually exceed where we've been before. I want to know what you guys want. I'm here to represent what it is you guys want to be represented. And, um, I ask for your vote. I hope I have the opportunity to represent you on the school board, uh, come November 6th. So thank you so much and, uh, thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wines. We appreciate everyone who has come together to put on this event. Thank you to our candidates who took the time to speak to us at this forum, our student volunteers who helped set this event up, Kabe in the back for filming and broadcasting this forum. As Team BHF president, I would like to also thank the Beverly Hills Education Foundation for assisting us in putting this together. Thank you, Jody Galen and Lori Ockham, our Team BHF liaison, for the continued support for, for tonight's refreshments. As Interact, at what, as Interact president, I would like to thank the wonderful Les Bronte and, and the Road to Club of Beverly Hills for their continued sponsorship and support. Uh, thank you to the wonderful teachers and staff at Beverly Hills High School for helping put together the event. And thank you to our audience and all those watching at home for their respect and willingness to make a difference in our community. And we do have a announcement, an announcement before you go. Oops. So, BHF is celebrating forty years of serving all five Beverly Hills schools with a reception on Wednesday, October 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the exclusive, limited engagement pop-up restaurant, um, The Secret Rose Garden at Beverly Wilshire. And BHF will be presenting, um, an alumni with the BHF fortieth anniversary distinguished service award, um, for his commitment and dedication. And all past BHF presidents will be recognized for their services. Uh, you may have gotten a flyer and if you didn't, there will be some outside. But just in conclusion, thank you all really so much for coming and supporting this process. Thanks for having us.